Ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the December 12th planning board meeting for PD-AD, your duty, thank you very much. Mr. Washington, we have a roll call.
Mr. Barhu.
Present.
Mr. McLean.
Here.
Mr. Newman.
Present.
Mr. Robinson.
Robinson.
Mrs. Avant.
Mr. Weatherholt.
Here.
And Ms. Washington, present.
Move on to item three, approval minutes of the July 25th, 2023.
Make a motion that we approve minutes as well.
Checking it.
Thank you very much, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, thank you very much. Any citizens would like to address the board concerning items on the agenda? We ask that you fill out the green comment form, please, and come to the lecture if you please state your name and address the record. Uh, we have a time limit of three minutes. That's not saying you have to use all the three minutes, and you can get your, uh, what you need to say again, less than that, then that's fine. So, let's move on, if we could, to item four A.
Good evening, Dana Lee Pettick, Senior Planner. This item is a request by the City of Daytona Beach to vacate a 20-foot by 40.25-foot, or 845 square feet, unopened portion of the Baldwin Lane right-of-way located east of Division Street between Eldorado Street and Orange Avenue. The right-of-way, along with the surrounding city-owned parcel, is currently developed as a paved parking lot with a storage yard and stormwater pond, former storage yard. The requested vacate area is at the terminus of the right-of-way, which is known as Baldwin Lane, as shown here, and is where a city-owned parking lot is, as you can see here. The right-of-way is a 20-foot unnamed alley created as part of the Row Ladder Fourth Edition Platte recorded in 1913. The right-of-way was never constructed as a roadway, and the platted lots directly adjacent to the vacate area were combined with other properties to create a parcel which is currently owned by the city. The sketch of description of the requested vacation is shown here. Um, and the City of Daytona Beach Planning Division and Redevelopment Division requested this right-of-way vacation as the city-owned property, including this portion of right-of-way, is under review for a rezone to the Valencia Square Plan Development Redevelopment to be heard concurrently with this request. If the vacate and rezone are approved, the property will be redeveloped with a 62-unit mixed-income multifamily residential housing complex, under an agreement with the City of Daytona Beach and the developer. Rights-of-way vacation requests require review and recommendation by the planning board with final decision by City Commission. As part of the review, there must be a finding of competent substantial evidence that the proposed vacation meets the standards under Section 3.4 and the Land Development Code. First, there must be a finding that the right-of-way is not now, nor in the foreseeable future, needed for public purpose for the city or its inhabitants. This portion of Baldwin Lane right-of-way is not currently being used for access purposes, and, as previously mentioned, is currently constructed with a paved parking lot owned by the city. The vacation would not eliminate necessary access to any adjacent property owners, as the remainder of Baldwin Lane would be kept as public right-of-way as shown here. The area in blue would be the right-of-way that would still remain as legal access, and the vacate area is shown in red. Letters of no objection have been obtained from the utility providers. FPNL has two secondary power poles in the area which will require relocation by the developer, which will be done at site plan. No other utility providers have objected to the vacate. And the second criteria is there must be a finding the vacation of the right-of-way is consistent with the comprehensive plan. As the right-of-way is not designated in the city's comprehensive plan, nor do any other policies related to right-of-way apply, the vacation request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. If the vacation is approved, the 845-feet, 45-square feet of right-of-way would be converted to acreage and combined with the surrounding city-owned parcel, and it would allow the Valencia Square rezone to proceed. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the requested vacate of a 20-foot by 42.25-foot. I don't know what the right length is, I have two different numbers. Anyway, it's a... Unopened portion of the Baldwin Lane right-of-way of the Row Ladder Fourth Edition Platte recorded in mapbook 15, page 151, in the public records of Volusia County. A majority vote by the planning board members present and voting is required to recommend approval to the City Commission, and this item is tentatively scheduled to be heard for the first and only reading at the October 2nd City Commission meeting. And that concludes my presentation, and it is 42.25 feet, sorry, I just had it written down wrong.
No problem, thank you, great job. Any questions for staff?
And staff is also the applicant.
I was gonna say, so we can move right through the applicant part of that, absolutely. And Pierce, we don't have any speakers for against in this item, so I would ask for a motion for item four A, please.
Can I make a motion that we approve, um, item Agenda for A, right-of-way vacation, PD-2024-065?
Second.
Perfect, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, thank you very much, passed unanimously, appreciate, thank you. Moving on to the concurrent item that we were just talking about. Item four B, Madam Secretary, please.
Certainly, Valencia Square Plan Development Redevelopment, PD-AD, DEV 2023-065.
Thank you very much. Hear from staff, please.
Yep, so, good evening, Dana Lee Pettick again. This item is a request by Robert Merrill, Cobb Cole, on behalf of Framework Group LLC to rezone approximately 3.73 acres from redevelopment Midtown Neighborhood Transition Mixed Use, RDM 5, to Plan Development Redevelopment, PD-RD, to allow for redevelopment of a mixed-income multifamily housing complex project with 62 residential units and associated site improvements. The property is located northeast of Orange Avenue and Division Street. The future land use on the property is commercial transitional, and the proposed rezone is from RDM 5 to PD-RD. And this is the aerial of the property, which shows the existing city-owned development, which is the parking lot and the stormwater pond, as discussed in the previous item. So, as I just said, the property is currently developed with city-owned parking lot and stormwater pond, and the applicant is requesting to rezone to Plan Development Redevelopment to develop a mixed-income multifamily housing complex with 62 units, 24 of which will be affordable units. Under an agreement with the city, in exchange for the 24 affordable rental units, the developer will acquire the property at no cost. As the property is located in the redevelopment area, this rezone request is subject to review by the Midtown Redevelopment Board. This is the PD plan showing the proposed layout of the multifamily development, and the amendment includes waiver requests to modify the Land Development Code requirements to accommodate the proposed development. First, the applicant is requesting to set a standard 30-foot separation between buildings instead of the code-required 25-to-40-foot separation, which is dependent on how the buildings are oriented towards each other. For parking, the applicant is requesting a waiver to allow up to 20% of the required parking spaces to be provided as compact spaces, and they are also requesting a waiver to allow tandem parking spaces so long as the spaces are dedicated to the same unit. Tandem spaces are similar to a residential driveway where cars can park behind one another in the same space. And the last waiver is for signage to allow for the creation of a sign program with two monument signs with a max combined sign area of 200 square feet and a max height of 20 feet. The code limits signage for this type of development to a max sign area of 64 feet and a max height of 8 feet. This rezone request was presented at the August 13th, 2024 Midtown Redevelopment Board meeting, where they recommended approval 6-0, and staff supports the Midtown Redevelopment Board's recommendation of approval. So therefore, staff recommends the planning board forward the rezone of 3.73 acres from redevelopment Midtown Neighborhood Transition Mixed Use, RDM 5, to Plan Development Redevelopment, PD-RD, to the City Commission with a recommendation of approval. A majority vote by the planning board members present and voting is required to recommend approval to the City Commission, and this item is tentatively scheduled to be heard by City Commission for first reading on October 2nd with the right-of-way vacate and for second reading on October 16th.
Good job.
Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Seeing none, could we hear from the applicant? Hey, Rob, how are you?
Mr. Chair, nice to see you. Planning Board Members, Rob Merrill. For the record, with Cobb Cole, One Daytona Boulevard, here in Daytona Beach. I'm here representing Philip Smith and the Framework Group. You may remember their names. They are under construction with the 400 Beach Street Luxury Apartments on Beach Street, which I think is gonna help us, along with Brown and Round, to turn this place around. So, we're real excited about being partnered with the city on this project. As Dana Lee said, I'm not gonna go into the details unless you want to talk about them, but at the end of the day, we're in a partnership on this property. It used to be the storage yard for the utility department, they had piles of gravel and trucks and stuff there over the years, and we're turning this into some affordable housing, some well-done, nice affordable housing for the community. And I think, you know, Mr. Smith, who's the owner of Framework Group, has done from luxury all the way to affordable, he's done homeless housing, the guy has a passion for housing, so it's almost contagious when you're around him. So, I'm real excited to be here on his behalf, and I think you guys have met him, maybe, I think, when we've gone through the process for the 400 Beach Street project, but he's here, I think, in what we think is a perfect partnership. You guys have been talking about affordable housing, we all have, for quite some time now. A few things have come along in different forms than this, but this public-private partnership, I think, is a perfect fit. We found a piece of ground the city has that they're really not using for much, and we've done a lot of this, so hopefully the partnership's gonna work out well, and everybody's gonna turn out to have some more housing available for people who can't afford it.
Fantastic. Rob, I think this is just great, as you say, we're utilizing a property that has, we haven't done anything with forever, and now 40% of those units, of those 62 units, are going to be affordable housing, 12 of them are gonna be low affordable, then the other 12 are gonna be in the moderate category, but both are badly needed, so I'm excited about it. I think credit to all that were involved. With that, do we have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Barhu, you look like...
Well, no, the question I had is, I just wanted some more information from the Midtown representative about the discussion of this item. Did they attend the meeting, and what were some of the comments? Who was in Midtown?
Um...
No, I was just trying to find who was the representative.
Not... Oh, no, the...
We had a unanimous...
6-0 and all that.
Yeah, and we had some discussion.
If I may, we do have a representative from the, uh, from city staff who is a project manager for the Midtown Redevelopment Area who attended the meeting, Michelle Tolliver. And she can, Michelle, would you, she'll, she can speak briefly on, on kind of what happened at the board and the temperature of the board.
She'd be happy to.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, planning board members. I'm Michelle Tolliver, I'm the project manager for Midtown. And Pastor Barhu, most of the comment, if not all of it, was enthusiastic, enthusiastically, enthusiastically? Extremely excited! I've never been tongue-tied before, so I'm gonna leave the enthusiasm alone, but they were all in support of it, they commented in reference to the public meeting, they wanted to know, and Rob and Jessica gave them the positive feedback, as well as the backup, on the community involvement in terms of the neighborhood meeting, they were very I cannot remember anything in terms of concerns. The tandem parking, they had a question on, and they understood that, yep, and they had no problem after it was explained. But the Midtown Board was in full support of it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Barhu, just to be helpful, as I'm staring through what I sort of read and memorized the minutes of the meeting, one item that was mentioned was, a couple folks were asking how long that the project would take to be completed, and they were discussing the 12 to 16-month timeframe, so that's reasonable.
Right, my only other question, quick question, is how did they come up with a 40% to be low-income, why wasn't that a 50% since the city is donating the land, or?
So, Tony, Rob again, so that was all, that's all been settled in an agreement, it's already been approved by the commission, so it was...
I would just wonder.
I think it's, so this, this project having a mix like that, I think is a positive thing, you know?
It is very positive, I'm all for it, I agree, but I was just curious.
To tell you exactly how the numbers came out, it'd be hard to do, but it was in a negotiation between us and the City Commission, and that's how it ended up.
I think that the development that the gentlemen are starting at is, we have waited in anticipation for it, and I'm looking forward to getting completed. The city's been talking about for years about affordable housing. I think the location's an excellent location for it, the percentage, I would have liked to have seen it get higher, but it's already negotiated, and I think it's well-needed in the city, and I look forward to it being completed.
Thank you.
And that journey of a thousand miles starts with the first step, so we're at least having, we do have those 24 units that are designated for something that we know is a challenge throughout our seventy years. With that...
If I can comment, please.
Mr. Robinson had his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Robinson had his hand up.
Oh, Mr. Robinson, my apologies. I gotta look this way, sir, there you go, all yours.
Would you speak up, please, into the mic?
I said, I applaud the effort to get affordable housing, my concern, and I see that somebody should make sure to... Still...
I can hear him.
You can hear me? Okay. One of the concerns that I noticed in the reading was that everybody is for...
Everybody is for the meeting, I mean, the project, which is great. One of the concern, though, is the consolidation of affordable housing in one particular part of the city. And my, my question or my issue is, are we also, I'm not against where it's, where it is, but are we also looking at other places within the city that the city has land that we could also put affordable housing instead of the consolidation in that one particular area? I mean, I applaud the effort that we're gonna have, you know, luxury apartments and stuff like that, but I would also like to see affordable housing in other parts of the city, to spread it out, so that it's not just consolidated in one area. If we're gonna redevelop, and we're redeveloping that area, we ought to go beyond just affordable housing, but we need to diversify the housing in there, and this is a good step, but I would like to also see the city expand affordable housing in other areas and other zones, so that the burden of affordable housing is not just consolidated in that area.
I agree. And like Mike said, you take one step, and hopefully got some more coming after at Milverton. I will say that I probably should have given more historical context to this by saying, when Philip Smith came here to do the project that's being constructed on Beach Street, first thing out of his mouth was, you know, is, are there any places that the city would want to have affordable housing, because we do that too? And part of what happens is, it creates an economies of scale. He gets his subcontractors that are building this luxury apartment building, and literally a few blocks away, he shuffles them over to do this project. So, it creates a really good synergy. When we, when we, when we came to the city and said, what do you guys have available to try to partner on this, that one was, the first thing that they said was, was available. So, yeah, I think there are other properties that the city owns, and I know we've had some conversations about that with the City Commission, you know, Jessica's been an expert in, in having those conversations with a lot of folks, including the county, so the answer is absolutely.
And my other, um, point that I'd like also to look at is the local community, right, as far as employment in the construction and the training and building of this project in the redevelopment area, what is the commitment by the developer to ensure that the local folks who live in there, you know, get a slice of the pie in terms of employment and the benefit from it, instead of you have your subcontractors, but you have your subcontractors coming in, are you gonna be utilizing a lot of the local folks to increase the economic enhancement?
I think the partnership between the City of Daytona Beach and the Framework Group is certainly focused on, on that, on having local folks be involved, so, and they, you know, they've done that elsewhere. So, for instance, they pretty much redid downtown Tampa, you know, in conjunction with Tampa at the time, 15 years ago, whatever it was when Tampa was not so great. Philip Smith came in as Framework Group and did several projects, and if you go down there now with the Riverwalk and the things they have, it's phenomenal. So, that's the kind of thing that he brings to the table, including trying to get local folks involved, absolutely. So, not just from a standpoint of the labor force and employment, but community-wise. So, he gets different organizations in the community and incorporates them into his projects. For instance, he did one on the West Coast where they ended up having an art gallery in the apartment, and I think it was at Ringling, um, one of, one of the, one of the groups that does the art over there came in and actually took over, and they have now a partnership with them. So, I think you'll find that a lot of good things are gonna come out of this.
Okay, I'll be looking forward to it.
Yeah.
Well, I think too, Rob, what you're talking about and kind of dovetails on what Mr. Robinson's saying, is that it appears, at least with this item, the city is a willing participant, but you also have to have a willing applicant that is willing to work with us on a public-private partnership to get these types of results, and hopefully, as what we've talked about earlier, this may be the first of many. If it ends up being successful and promoted well and all those good things, then hopefully we can, we can expand this into the future, so I think it's a, it's a great start.
Great.
Any other questions?
I just had a comment, and it basically reflecting Mr. Robinson's comments about concentrating low-income in one area and having this a multi-level income development, I applaud that, because it, it prevents that from happening. When you get too much low-income in one area, it's essentially, ends up by demographics redlining that area for further development. So, what we really want to see is not concentrating, not, not too much in one place, but around the city in different areas, and, and spread out, because that's been a problem in the past in this city.
Good point, Jamie.
Thank you.
And I think, Milverton, I probably should have said that in answer to your question, this, this project itself has a mix, so it's not concentrating one particular type of housing, it's three different levels, so I think that's positive, too.
Now, let me ask you one more question.
Please.
In this development, would you be able to distinguish between the low-income apartments?
No.
No, there won't be no distinction?
Other than what you have to pay for rent?
Yeah.
They're all, it's all the same.
Okay, so there would be no way that I can walk in there and says that's...
You're never gonna know the difference, and it's, it's been done that way throughout, so.
Okay, thank you.
No further pointing will be necessary, Mr. Robinson. Oh, 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 it appears that will not be the case. Any other questions for Rob? Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Gus.
No problem, thank you. Folks, we have no speakers on this item, so I'm gonna jump right in and ask for a motion on item four B, please.
Motion to approve Agenda Item 4B, Quasi-Judicial Hearing Plan Development Redevelopment Rezoning, DEV 2023-065, Valencia Square Plan Development.
Second. Thank, thank you very much, and any questions or concerns? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, thank you very much, passes unanimously, 6-0. Thank you. Let's move on to item 4C, Madam Secretary, if you would.
Certainly. 4C, Cornerstone Plan Development General, PDG, and Pre-Flat, DEV 2023-433, DEV 2023-120.
There it is, exactly, thank you. We hear from staff.
Yes.
Aye, you're back.
Yes, good evening, Dana Lee Pettick again. This item is a request by Jessica Gao with Cobb Cole on behalf of the developer to combine and unify the Cornerstone Office Park Planned Commercial Development and the Cornerstone Exchange Plan Development into Cornerstone Plan Development General. This request also includes the preliminary plat for the Cornerstone Office Park Replat III subdivision. The property is located southwest of LPGA Boulevard and Williamson Boulevard. The future land use on the property is mixed use, and the proposed rezone is from PD to PD. And this is the aerial of the property, which shows the property as partially developed or under construction with office and retail uses. The entire property was originally rezoned to the Cornerstone Office Park Planned Commercial Development in 2002. In 2021, the southern portion of the property was rezoned to the Cornerstone Exchange PD, and during those years, the property was partially developed under the separate PDs. Now, the applicant is requesting to rezone to unify the property into one plan development to explain, to expand the allowable uses for the entire property and establish a development program. This slide shows the boundaries of the original Cornerstone Office Park and the southern portion, which was rezoned to the Cornerstone Exchange PD in 2021, and the portion which still remains as the Cornerstone Office Park. The new unified Cornerstone Plan Development proposes to add additional uses as permitted uses and apply them to the entire PD and establish a development program for the entire site, including a master sign plan. The request also includes approval of the preliminary plat for the Cornerstone Office Park Replat III subdivision. Regarding the proposed uses, several are allowable uses permitted within the existing PDs. Many are only applicable to the Cornerstone Exchange PD, which covers the southern portion of the subject property. The rezone would expand these uses to the entire property and add additional uses such as convenience store, microbreweries, large retail sales establishments, motor vehicle sales and service, and additional entertainment and medical uses. The full list of uses proposed are in the staff report. This is the proposed PD plan, and this is the proposed preliminary plat. As part of the PD rezone, the applicant has requested waivers and modifications to the Land Development Code. First, for landscaping, the applicant requests to reduce the required width of the scenic thoroughfare overlay buffer, which is required on, along LPGA Boulevard and Williamson Boulevard, from 50 feet down to 35 feet, while still providing all the landscaping required in the 50-foot buffer. Staff does not object to the reduction in the width, however, as the buffers along these roadways are existing and have many mature plantings, as shown in these slides, staff has requested the applicant revise the PD agreement to preserve the existing established buffer and provide a detailed tree survey buffer plan, which is shown here. And this was provided by the applicant after the August 22nd meeting and before this one, so it has been updated in this current agenda. So, as this has now been established as part of the proposed PD, any modifications to these existing buffers would require a major amendment to the PD, which is subject to public hearings. For signage, the applicant requests waivers to the maximum height and size limitations for two project identification signs, to be located where the red stars are located on this slide. As part of the master sign program, the proposed height would be 25 feet with a maximum sign area of 302 square feet. For comparison, the sign for the neighboring Timoca Town Center is 35 feet in height. The applicant also requests to waive the restriction on off-site signage to allow advertising of uses which are on different lots, but still within the PD boundary on the same sign. The PD agreement includes a provision to allow hotel use to be constructed without meeting the 15% window coverage in the Land Development Code. Elevations showing how the proposed hotel use would look are included in the PD agreement, and they are shown here. So, with all that, staff recommends the planning board forward the rezone of 22.71 acres from the Cornerstone Office Park Planned Commercial Development and the Cornerstone Exchange Plan Development to Plan Development General, and the preliminary plat for the Cornerstone Office Park Replat III subdivision to the City Commission with a recommendation of approval, with the condition regarding landscape buffers, as shown here and in the staff report. The condition has actually been met by the applicant, so it no longer has to be a condition as part of this recommendation. So, a majority vote by the planning board members present and voting is required to recommend approval to the City Commission, and this item is tentatively scheduled to be heard by City Commission. by City Commission for first reading on October 16th and second reading on November 6th. Thank you.
Great. Great job. And just, I know you ran through it a couple of times. Just so I can hear you say it.
Yeah.
The, the applicant has agreed to keep the existing buffers on both LPGA and Williamson, and that's what happened after the meeting on the 22nd. That agreement happened between then and now.
Yeah. The applicant provided after the August 22 meeting, which did not actually occur, they provided an updated PD agreement with the language added in and a, the buffer exhibit, which is here, that shows the existing landscaping along LPGA and Williamson Boulevard, which would be an exhibit to the PD agreement.
Got you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other questions for staff? Thank you. Great job. Could we hear from the applicant? Hey, Jessica, how are you?
Good evening. My foot always falls asleep, so the first time I walk over to you guys. I'm limping. For the record, Jessica Gao, Cobb Cole Law Firm, 1 Daytona Boulevard in Daytona Beach, Florida. Isn't this site fun? You know, some of you guys remember a few years ago when some of the owners in the area, I'm going to say, got a tiff, and so we separated them out. We have gotten back together. Everybody's in agreement now. We say, we're putting you back together. Everybody get along. And so, I think when we originally split out these two PDs into the different plan developments, the city was hesitant. And they said, it works better as an overall unified development. You've got shared infrastructure. You've got shared parking and cross-access. But we made it work for the circumstances that were in place at that time. So, now that we are able to bring it back together and have a cohesive plan again, we'd like to just memorialize that for the site. The main modifications that you see is that the uses that we allowed there on the Cornerstone Exchange side will be allowed on the flips, just so you have a matching list of uses for the overall site. The signage, the land development code for commercial ground signage allows 35 feet. They're coming in 10 feet under what's currently allowed by code. And you can see on the signage plan, we have the total square footage called out. You can kind of see how it's allocated among the different uses. And we thought it's easier just to call it out in a comprehensive sign plan instead of going parcel by parcel because that bottom part has been subdivided out since the original zoning. So, you can see the actual sign renderings, what they're going to look like, and the signs there on the plan. And then on the buffers, they were planted, you know, they had met that 50-feet requirement, and all the plants were within that 35 feet. And so, with this rezoning, we've said that 35 is going to be the buffer. It's going to stay exactly as it is, and there are no changes to that vegetation as part of this rezoning. If they wanted to modify that in the future, they'd have to come back through this process. Really, this one's, I hope, a straightforward one. It is some fun hoops that we jump through, but otherwise, we are here for questions that you guys have for the site.
Just a couple for you, Jessica. I appreciate the fact that from the meeting that we didn't have on the 22nd of August and today, that the, the master sign program, those, those numbers speak. It's always nice to see that once in a while. So, that's great. Congratulations on that. Secondly, on the uses, and this may be something that probably, at least how things are currently, may not make a lot of sense, but I'm wondering if you guys would consider putting communication tower as a possible use. Not saying we're going to build one today, understanding that perhaps we'd have to wait for technology to make those things a lot smaller than they are now.
Sure.
Only because thinking ahead, telecommunications is a, is a challenge in a lot of our areas in the city, and particularly with all the growth and commercial growth that's going on in Cornerstone, it may, I think, to at least, it's a, it's a trick in the bag that maybe will be used down the line. So, I'm just throwing that.
If staff has no opposition, we can add that into the.
I was going to say, if the applicant wants to do it, and if the board is in favor of that, staff doesn't have any objection to them adding that use to the PD.
I see. I'm looking around. I'm seeing smiling faces. Okay.
Some, some of them look like trees, you know. Not really.
With that, do, do we have any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Vice Chair?
On the, the buffer zone, are they going to add to the buffer zone of what's there now, the existing? Are they going to add any plants to it?
They're currently fully planted on the, I'm going to say, office portion. I don't think that they are fully planted on the remainder portion of Williamson closer to those development pods you see down there.
The only reason I bring that up, last night at the redevelopment board, you know, they want to start in the downtown area on using native plants. You know, the hotels and everything, that everybody wants to plant palm trees, which everybody expects palm trees, but palm trees aren't native plants. And so, I think that this would be an excellent area to incorporate some of the native plants that we want to do throughout the city, and this would be an ideal place. It's large. They could put large plants in there, but using as many native plants as they can, not just palm trees, oak trees, or whatever.
The, the city actually uses the University of Florida's native plant list as our guide for when somebody asks what plants are allowed to be planted in the city. That's the list that we give them. We say, use from this list when you're planting in the city. So, that's what you'll find extensively that's happening.
But the problem is, is they don't use them.
No, they, they do. They, it's, it's an extensive list, but they go through that list and they, and they, there's a variety of different plants that they can use. And so, they, they're, they are required to use that, plants from that plant list.
And I think that list does include some Florida-friendly, not just native, right? That's a spread. So, if you want to focus on native.
For the zone, for the zone and what, what works in the area.
Right.
So.
Right plant, right place.
You know, the area is-
It's the Gator Plant Plan. That's what we're talking about. Okay.
You know, the, the plants that, that they use, they're, they're not native. They're native-friendly, like you say. But there's very few places in, in Daytona that I know of that can, you can't plant native plants. Native plants are good in wet zones, which we have quite a few of them. They're good in just pure sand. That's what they, that's the reason they're called native plants. And I just, I bring that up as just a suggestion.
Absolutely.
Because it was brought up last night, and we're hoping the city kind of comes with the plant. Thank you.
Any, any other questions for Jessica? It appears not.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you. Okay. We don't have any speakers on this item as well, so I would ask for a motion on item 4C, please.
I move that we accept and approve agenda item 4C, quasi-judicial hearing, planned development, general rezoning, and preliminary plat, DEV 2023-43, and DEV 203-120, Cornerstone PD.
I second it.
Just, just to make a correction. This is to include that telecommunication use as well to the, to the list.
Absolutely.
Yes.
To include the telecommunication tower.
Thank you. That's my fault. Remind yourself.
Well, I said, we should have amended then to include the telecommunication.
Or amend the motion. So, and it appears she did that. Second, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Very good. Very good. Any, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you very much. Moving forward to item 4D. Madam Secretary, please.
Item 4D, Lakewood Senior Housing Site Plan, DEV 2024-087.
Very good. Thank you. Hear from staff. You're back?
I'm back again for the last time, hopefully. So, good evening. Danley Peddic, senior planner. This item is a request by Daniel Acosta with Accruva on behalf of the property owner, Lakewood Senior Housing, LLLP, for approval of the major site plan for a 56-unit senior multifamily residential development. The property is located west of Jimmy N. Drive, approximately one-half mile south of LPGA Boulevard. The future land use on the property is office transitional, and the zoning is Lakewood Senior Housing Plan Development. And this is the aerial of the property, showing it is currently a vacant wooded lot. The property was rezoned to Lakewood Senior Housing Plan Development in July 2024 to allow this development. The facility will be 143,333 square-foot building, which is four stories tall, with parking, stormwater, and landscaping. The development is for 56 age-restricted multifamily units, which will be affordable. The site plan complies with the approved PD agreement and meets or exceeds all other land development code requirements. However, before staff issues the site plan approval letter, the applicant must provide the letter of exemption from Volusia County Schools. As it's age-restricted, Volusia County Schools will provide that. Per the applicant, obtaining this letter is in process, and I actually got an update a couple of hours ago, that they have recorded their restrictive covenants confirming that this is an age-restricted development, and they have sent that to Volusia County Schools. So, we should be getting that letter from them shortly.
Very good.
All other staff comments have been resolved. This slide shows the overall development plan of the property, including the landscape buffers and the location of the building. And this is the proposed site plan layout. And these are the architectural elevations of the proposed building, which meets the PD agreement conditions and the land development code requirements. Therefore, staff finds the proposed major site plan meets the review standards of the land development code and recommends the planning board approve the major site plan for Lakewood Senior Housing to allow for the construction of a 56-unit age-restricted multifamily residential development on 2.94 acres zoned as the Lakewood Senior Housing Plan Development. A majority vote by the planning board members present in voting is required to approve the major site plan. Thank you.
Great. Great job. Curious, when was the PD approved?
July 2024.
So, this, we're really fast-tracking here.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Okay. Very, very good. Any other questions for staff? Team None, thank you. Okay. Move forward. Could we hear from the applicant? One more time, Jessica.
Again, for the record, Jessica Gao, Cobb Cole Law Firm, 1 Daytona Boulevard, Daytona Beach, Florida. This is a site plan, so I just do my little fun facts, right? I think it's a great project originally. Nika and Mark in our office had this one. I'm excited to kind of see it through on the site plan level. This site plan has 60% open space overall. The PD allows 35% building coverage, and they're at 10. And so, we're really looking at really limited impacts from a building footprint, preservation of those natural areas and trees for that buffer area that you guys all discussed with the residents as it went through. They are above the required parking in the PD agreement. And, and talking to the client and development team, they offer shuttle services for doctor appointments and things like that for the residents, which I think is great because it's that senior living. So, as we talk about affordable housing, we get a little bit more in the bucket. We'll talk about setbacks a little bit later, and then I think in two weeks, we'll have a couple more affordable housing projects for you guys. So, it's an exciting time right now. I'm here for questions.
Can I say, any questions for Jessica?
I think it's a great idea. I think it's, we're talking about for seniors. I think the city's finally, you know, getting started on it, a good start, and I look forward to seeing more. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. Please.
It's just a comment to follow up on my previous, previous comment about consolidation. When we look in that particular area, there's so many senior housing in that area, assisted living facility, nursing homes, et cetera, et cetera. It would be great if we could spread them out, especially in the redevelopment areas. You know, that would, it's a very nice, attractive plan, but I would love to see it on another side of the town instead of just in that one particular area. Because what's going to happen is that one particular area is going to have a lot of senior citizens and not just everywhere else, you know. And if we can find empty vacant lots that the city owns in other parts of the city, you know, we might want to recommend to your clients next time, hey, how about this over here and spread it out to enhance, you know, a lot of the other parts of the city as well.
I think it's the pipeline, I'll say, from Margaritaville eventually, right? And in close parks, I mean, all the medical uses out there. But I agree, we need to spread out those as well.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Jessica, thank you.
Thank you.
We do have no speakers on this item, so I would ask for a motion on item 4D, please.
I make a motion. We approve item 4D, major site plan, DEV 2024-087, Lakewood Senior Housing Site Plan.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you very much. Passed unanimously. So, moving on to item 4E. Madam Secretary, please.
Just one moment. Who seconded that motion?
Vernon did.
You did. Okay.
I was going to say, it was a tie, I think.
Okay.
All right. We can move ahead. Item number 4.
E.
E.
Mm-hmm.
Exalt Health Site, excuse me, Exalt Health Site Plan, DEV 2024-112.
Very good. Thank you. You're from staff, Dennis. Are you going to?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take this one. This is actually Paula Long's item, but she is not here because of the, the rescheduling of the meeting, so I'll take care of this one. This item is a request by Joseph Hopkins with the Performance Group on behalf of Victor LLC, the property owner, to approve a major site plan constructing a 39,478 square-foot, 40-bed rehabilitation hospital, including landscaping, storm drainage, and site-related improvements on a 3.73-plus-or-minus-acre site. The property is located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Mason and Clyde Morris. Just to the west of the property is Alabama Street, which actually is an entrance to a residential neighborhood, which I'll get, get to that in just a second. The, the land use of the property is low-intensity commercial, and the zoning of the property is HM. And if you recall, just recently, at the February 22 planning board meeting, there was a recommendation by the planning board to rezon the property to the HM zoning district. That went on to the City Commission. The City Commission approved that in April of 2017. The applicant has turned that around pretty quick. He said he was pretty anxious to get this moving, and they've come forward with a site plan for this project for the, for the rehabilitation hospital. A couple of details about the site plan. The parking exceeds the land development code standards. And all of the, this is a site plan that meets every, every land development code standard, so there's no modifications. It's a straight zoning, meeting all code requirements. Parking, so it'll meet or exceed code requirements.
Wow.
So, the parking exceeds the land development code standards for parking, has 65 spaces. Only 60 were required. Vehicle access to the property will all occur from Clyde Morris Boulevard. There'll be no access coming from the residential area. So, everything is pushed toward the, to the major corridor. Pedestrian access also connects to the sidewalk along Clyde Morris Boulevard. There's no connections from any other location. Landscaping plan meets all land development code requirements, and with the traffic, the, the traffic generated is considered de minimis, the, with, with minimal impact to the surrounding area, and that's based on our code requirement. You have the, the site plans in your packet. It's a pretty good plan that, it's actually a very good plan that they put together. You'll see that the access and, and just by this orientation, Clyde Morris on the north, you've got Mason over there on the left, Alabama to the, to the bottom of the page. There is no access, you see, on Alabama, no access on Mason. It all occurs over there on Clyde Morris Boulevard. The parking primarily is up in that direction. There's a wall that's being installed along Alabama with the landscaping on the outside of the wall, so it's nice and protected over there. And it's a, it's a nice, quiet use for that area. The elevations provided in your packet, some architectural renderings for you. You'll see it's a low-profile, single-story building. It's got nice landscaping to support it. And again, it's a pretty low-intense use for that corner of the property. There is one condition, and it's, they're, they're working on some stormwater or some drainage calculations. I've talked to the folks from the Public Works Department. I've also talked to the applicant, and they're, they're just about where they need to be on those calculations. So, with that, we do have a recommendation of approval, provided that that outstanding condition is resolved. Staff does recommend approval of the major site plan to construct a 39,478-square-foot, 40-bed rehabilitation hospital with landscaping, stormwater, drainage, and all the site-related improvements on the seven, or excuse me, the 3.73-acre site. The majority vote of the planning board members present and voting is required to approve this application, and this is the, the approval stage. So, after this, it'll go to city staff for approval of the site plan. So, that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, sir. Just a question. I usually ask these ones on Exalt Health and Victor LLC, the owner. They're both out of Texas, as I understand it.
Yeah, that's, that's, as I understand it.
Has there been, have we done any work with these folks?
Well, I, I can, I, I'm not sure if we have, but I'll let the applicant speak on that maybe a little more.
I have a feeling that Mr. Hopkins will tell me. All, all is great. All is great, and that'll be, it'll be fine. So with that, I could ask the applicant to please...
Before we move on, I have a question for Dennis, real quick.
Oh, please do.
The ingress, egress for that corner is a real active, very busy corner. Would that impact, how would that impact traffic going in and out of the floor?
Well, this was designed to be as far from that intersection as it can, so it does, does work well with that. You know, there's only so far you can get it with, with the property, but, but it is moved from the Mason intersection quite a long way. So, so it, it's been, it's been reviewed by our traffic engineers, and they found this to be acceptable.
Okay.
Any other questions for Dennis? My apologies, Mr. Hopkins. Mr. Hopkins, good evening.
Good evening, board members. My name is Joe Hopkins. I'm an engineer with the Performance Group here in Daytona at 100 Marina Point Drive. As Dennis, thank, this Dennis for the presentation. I mean, you guys have seen this in February. You knew we were coming. We told you what we were doing. We showed you what we were doing, and here we are doing it. The property has changed hands. Victor LLC is, is a subsidiary of the Fisher family, who we've talked about before. They're very well invested in the community. They had taken this property under an exchange, and they have sold it to the Exalt Group. Exalt is very active in Florida right now. They have a couple of other hospitals under construction right now, and this is one they're chomping at the bit. They've already filed for a building permit with the city. They were willing to let, let that go through before this approval was finalized. This is a hospital. It goes through ACA, which is regulated, regulates all hospitals within the state of Florida. This is a real deal. And there, you know, we talk about senior housing and all these great senior housing projects. This is needed. This is a facility that is needed, and, and I share even just a personal note with you. My mother-in-law fell, went to the hospital, got her shoulder fixed, and went to one of these facilities for about 10 days. And so they, they serve a purpose in the whole rehabilitation and hospital mechanism. The hospitals treat these people, but they don't want to keep them in their facilities for an extended period of time. And they, they're not necessarily equipped to provide the rehab that these facilities specialize in. So it's a need in the market, and this parcel of land, I'm very, 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 very familiar with it. It's been vacant since, Kathy, help me here, forever. We tried a couple, we tried a couple of projects before. The PUD that, that we had in place for this parcel before had medical uses, and it had kind of a master plan, and we just didn't get any traction. We didn't get any gravity or any interest, and all of a sudden, Exalt comes along, and we, we, we fit it in there. You know, we intended to abide by the code, and we have. And it's a challenge. It's not easy. You know, putting this in there, all the stormwater, all the utilities, and these hospitals have special regulations with, you know, two water services and special redundancies and emergency power and all those things that are controlled by ACA. So it's a, it's a fantastic facility. It's a very expensive facility to construct, and it's a, it's a tremendous investment in our community. If there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
I just have a quick question, excuse me, about the stormwater. What's the problem with stormwater there? Is it where it's runoff, or...
No. The, in, in, in the stormwater arena, we have headwaters and we have tailwaters. This is the headwater of the drainage system. And the city adopted some recent regulations to have engineers like myself evaluate the effects of the stormwater on the downstream conditions and so forth. And we've, we've given the city that information. We can comply with all the city's rules and regulations. Then in mid-motion, the Water Management District adopted new regulations. And their regulations are based on water quality requirements, you know, pollutant loads, nitrogen and phosphorus reductions and things of that sort. We kind of retooled the, the design. It was better. It was, it required less of the pond volume that we had. So we actually kind of improved the, our position with the stormwater management system. We have more capacity than we had when we first submitted this to the city, but we're going to submit back to the city the new calculations, and we're in compliance with the Water Management District's rules and regulations and also with the city's.
That's great.
Thank you. But, Mr. Hopkins?
I like your rendition, your architectural rendering, and it looks very nice. I think it's going to enhance that corner.
Oh, yeah.
And one of the social issues that I have with investors, and not just in the building, but also, you see, the, the, the community that you're building next to is sitting in between the apartments for Jimmy Ann and now your hospital. And it's been a low socio-economic department, neighborhood. It's old. It's been here for a long time, and it's made a lot of progress. But what I'd like to see, when we talk to investors, is to take some investment into the community that they're going to be impacting and impacted, not just in the physical nature of it, but to see if maybe identify a training program, because you're going to need CNA, CNAs and nurses and medical folks.
Right.
And to identify people from the neighborhood, you know, through the Community College or Daytona State College or et cetera, to identify folks in the neighborhood that might be for training purposes and end up employing at this hospital, which is right next to their neighborhood. It would enhance the economic viability of the neighborhood also, and it shows a complete investment in the human beings or the human nature of the community and not just the physical environment such as this. I love it. It's going to be nice, but I also want to see folks from the neighborhood within walking distance, okay, to improve their economic situation too. And that's something that you might, you know, I'm not, I can't force you to do it, but for the, the idea that we're all responsible for each other and we're investment, I, I think that'd be a great investment in the community. It's an older community, and the folks there could use, I would think, some, you know, investment in it.
Understood. I'd be more than happy to bring that message back to the Exalt Group. We have educational facilities here within Daytona that you all are very familiar with, Bethune-Cookman, Kaiser, University of Florida, Daytona State, that are all going to be feeders to some of the talent that we're going to need for this facility. And there's, there's skilled, skilled, and there's, there's a lot of doctors and a lot of the, the hierarchy of a facility like this is pretty, pretty, it's impressive. Really is. And, and as far as the community goes, you know, we, we're very sensitive to that. When, when we brought the PUD forward, there was some concerns with the neighborhood about our impact and so forth. We're building a concrete wall to insulate us from the neighborhood. And it sounds, sounds aggressive, but it's not going to be a PVC fence. It's not going to be some, something, some low-grade barrier. It's going to be something that's formidable, that's going to stay up and be there for a while. In addition to that, at the intersection of Alabama and Mason Avenue, there is no drainage. There's none. We had a lot of complaints about budding and so forth in that area. As part of our stormwater design, we're going to improve that section of Alabama, I don't see the map, but from Alabama, I think it's Washington, can't recall, to Mississippi. So there is no drainage structures, no improvements between Mason Avenue and Mississippi Street right now. There will be when we're finished this project. So we're going to improve some, some deficiencies that already occur in that neighborhood, and we're, it's going to, it's going to be a better deal. I guarantee you that.
You know, that neighborhood has two exits and two entrances, and I don't know, you're going to build a concrete wall.
Correct.
And to me, that's like almost walling them in, you know? Maybe you can, it might, it's too late, but I want you to think about it, right? You're going to build a concrete wall to a neighborhood, okay, and it's going to separate this property from the other properties. But maybe a concrete wall might not be the most appropriate wall. And if you do that, maybe you can extend your landscaping to the entrances that's close by, that you're going to be walled in, you know? Because on the other side is the Bellamy Apartments, okay? And now, and that's walled in, okay? And then on the other, on your side is going to be a concrete wall. That's almost like one in, there's only two ways in there, and you might want to look at the, the mental health issue or the, you know? I'm just, I'm just mentioning that for you to look at. When, your wall is going to be probably very nice, but think about, do you really want to put a concrete wall there?
Well, the codes... Excuse me, I think it's residential housing across the street from it.
That's correct.
My daughter has a house right there, though.
The, the...
Concrete wall is good.
The code requires the wall.
Okay.
And, and, you know, we, we can do a block wall. This is actually precast panels.
Okay.
And it's, it's very formidable. It's just not going to get knocked down. It's not going to blow over or anything of that sort. A car hits it, poor luck for the car, because the wall is still going to be standing. And we're, we're very integrated in the sidewalk network. Alabama, Mason, Clyde Morris, it's all integrated. We're connecting to it. So there will be definitely access into the site for pedestrians and vehicles as well.
If I might, thank you for explaining the ownership changes.
Sure.
So you know, there's something I pay attention to. And regarding Mr. Robinson's comments, I would just ask that when there are opportunities for, for the applicant to be a good or great community partner and be able to affect not only their fiscal presence, but the presence of folks around them, that, that we examine that opportunity when, when, when it makes sense to. That being said, I just want to say this is, in my opinion, a great application. Joe, you did a hell of a job here.
Thanks, sir.
Congratulations. So with that, any other comments for Joe?
Thank you, Joe.
I just have one other comment, and when these guys came to town, one of the first thing they did is went to the Chamber of Commerce and started talking with them to get engaged in the community. And I don't believe they're going to stop there. I think they're going to continue their involvement. They want to be integrated in the community, and that's the way they started their visit here, and I think that's the way they're going to continue.
That's great to hear.
Yes, sir.
That's great to hear, Joe. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Before you go any further...
Yes.
On 4E, who made that motion?
This is 4E.
We haven't got there yet. We haven't got there yet.
Okay, all right. Then I'm on point.
Okay, good.
I wanted to make sure I was on point.
I thought maybe I fell asleep, I think. Since Madam Secretary wants a motion, we need to do a motion, so...
Motion to approve Agenda Item 4E, Major Site Plan Approval, DEV 2024-112, Exalt Health.
Second.
There you go.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much for your support.
Our pleasure, sir. Well, we're moving on to item 4F. Madam Secretary, it's all yours.
Item 4F, Affordable Housing Setbacks Land Development Code Text Amendment, DEV 2024-531.
Very good. Thank you. Dennis, I see you staring at your...
Yeah, I'm staring at my notes there, yes.
I'm assuming you're carrying the ball on this one.
Yeah, I am. Thank you. Dennis Rosak, Planning Director with the city. This is a request by Growth Management and Planning Department, the Planning Division, to amend Article 6 Development Standards and Section 6.22 Affordable Housing of the Land Development Code to allow a five-foot minimum side yard setback on lots that are 50 feet wide for single-family detached residential dwellings that qualify as affordable housing. The, this would allow five-foot setbacks for affordable, single-family detached homes on lots that are 50-foot wide regardless of the zoning district. A lot of the houses that we have, a lot of the lots that we have in the city, most of them are in single-family SFR5 zoning districts. A lot of the lots we have are just platted at a 50-foot lot. That's kind of a standard lot size that, that had been platted with the city, and that's what we find a lot of in the city. This particular amendment would also, would require that the, the single-family detached dwellings must be permitted as a permitted use within a zoning district. So to have the single family, you have to have the single family allowed in a zoning district on that 50-foot lot. I've got this, this kind of table that I put up over here for you guys in your staff report. The SFR5 zoning district, if you have a 50-foot lot, you're required to have a 7.5 side yard setback, 7.5-foot side yard setback. That's for a 50-foot lot. If you have a 49-point, 49-foot, 11-inch, you can have a five-foot setback. So there, that line right there is at 50 feet. Unfortunately, with a lot of the lots platted at 50 feet, they would require that seven and a half foot. Sometimes it's applicable in some locations. We do have a lot of lots that can be used for affordable housing. This is an opportunity for, for some of those affordable housings to go on these, these 50-foot lots. One of the things that we did find out with the, a lot of the affordable housing, and one in particular, there's standard models that they use to keep costs down. They don't redesign every single house that comes through for a separate lot. They have standard designs that they have for these lots. And this, this particular affordable housing component is a 40-foot wide home, and that, that five-foot setback is, is vital on those 50-foot lots to have those. So took a look at the code and an opportunity to make a reduction to be able to assist some of the affordable housing. Doesn't happen everywhere. It's going to be happening in, in just kind of places all over the city where we might be able to do this. So we, we put together the, the text amendment. It's in your, in your note, in your staff report as well. Single-family detached dwelling side yard setbacks for a single-family detached dwelling on a parcel that is 50-foot wide, permitted to have a minimum side yard setback of five feet regardless of the side yard setback standards for that zoning district in which the property is located, provided that the single-family detached dwelling is, is a permitted use in that zoning district. And this is all under the affordable housing category. So with that, staff does recommend approval of our request to amend the Land Development Code to allow the five-foot minimum side yard setbacks on lots that are 50 feet wide for single-family detached dwellings that qualify as affordable housing. Majority vote of the Planning Board members present and voting is required to recommend approval to the City Commission. Item is anticipated to be heard by the City Commission on the October 2nd reading for first reading and the October 16th for the second reading, which is an aggressive turn for us to get to that, to get to that area, and we want to try to get this in front of the City Commission as quickly as possible. And that does conclude staff's presentation.
So Dennis, bottom line, every district from SFR5 through RGM6 and everything in between, we're moving those side yard setbacks to five feet, and we're going to be consistent.
Yeah, and if you take a look at that, that table again, if guys, if you can put that table up, many of the zoning districts, a lot of the redevelopment do allow the 50, or, excuse me, the five-foot side yard setbacks on those 50-foot lots, and there's a couple of them with a 40-foot wide lot that they allow the five-foot setback. It's the single family with the seven and a half feet, and then the multifamily, and then some of the T districts and ERP that have that, that larger standard. So it's still a very good setback, that five-foot setback, and it allows for the affordable housing to occur.
And now we make it consistent.
Now we make it consistent, yes.
Mr. Robinson, please.
A question for you, Mr. Dennis. Is there a breakdown across the city of the number of 50-foot, 50-feet lots and 60-feet lots, or you don't have a breakdown?
Not that I have, no. I don't, I don't know. I'd have to talk to our IT department, our GIS department, see if there's a way that they'd be able to track it. They'd have to track it through the property appraiser and determine exactly how big that lot is. Somebody would have to go through and make that count and do that. We just don't have that, that number of how many 50-foots that we have.
Well, you know, and the reason I ask that, you know, following up on my earlier comments about affordable housing being consolidated in one area, would this, I would like to see what the breakdown is across the city, so that when we come to the affordable housing piece of it, right, we're just not consolidated in one area, but we're spread out towards the city. And it would be nice to know whether or not Zone 1 or Zone 5 got more 50 or whatever within the zones. It would be nice to have that breakdown.
Well, and what we tried, yeah.
And the city should have that information, Andy, to your GIS.
Well, I can ask them if they have it handy, but I don't know if it's handy. They may be able to put it together, and we'll see what we can do.
Okay.
So that's what we tried to do, is just, is kind of be blind as to the zoning districts, whether it's in a redevelopment area or not. whether it's in a redevelopment area or not in a redevelopment, we opened it up to all of the zoning districts that allow that single-family use.
Right, and that's fine, that's fine, but I would just like to know by the numbers, you know, how many of the 50-feet lots and where they're located, so we're not just putting all of them in just over here.
We can try, we can take a look and see what we can find.
Because some folks will say, you know, it's fine, but I don't want it in my neighborhood.
You know, one of the, the older sections, using midtown area, the older sections, it was very standard to have a 50-foot lot because the houses were a lot smaller. But there's a lot of 50-foot lots over on Beachside. Going down Peninsula, there's quite a few of them, going north of Peninsula, there's a lot of them. And so they're scattered all over other than the new areas that were the City of Daytona annexed. There's where the biggest change came in, Daytona was a small city at one time, and then when they incorporated a lot of the areas, that's where the small areas are.
Yeah, it would be good-
And, you know, and a lot of the, the lots that the city owns are small and they don't meet the requirements for a seven and a half foot setback.
I know, if you go down Campbell's, is that the street name now, Campbell? That street, a lot of the old lots on there, on Campbell Street.
Absolutely.
Are the 50-foot lots, and you go in those streets back up in there, they're, because that's what they were at that time.
That's MLK now.
Yeah. There you go.
MLK, yeah.
And, and come back to my point, right, we want to make sure that the affordable housing is spread out consistently within the city and not within just one area, you know, as we discussed earlier. So that, I'm just saying that somebody ought to look at the numbers to make sure that we are being consistent and there's an equitable distribution of affordable housing, so that everybody has-
That's going to be a lot of work because you think about it, most of those lots, the people aren't even, aren't even alive.
True.
Most of those lots, the people that owned them aren't even alive anymore.
But the-
I know individuals that have tried to locate families to purchase their lots, but those people moved, didn't keep in touch with anybody, they passed on and the lots are just there.
Right.
Because I've asked about some of them being cut, that was the issue I ran into.
But that information might be available through the county, yeah? It's, it should be available by the county appraisers.
It's just-
Because they've got to appraise each lot.
It just takes a lot of time to put that type of information together.
That's okay, it'd be nice to have.
It would be.
And I think commissioners-
My, my problem is I have to allocate staff time to be able to do that and, and to be able to find the time.
County has it.
But we'll see what we can do and there's an easy way to put that together.
Okay, I appreciate it.
And let's remember wherever the, these particular lots might be, what we're talking about with this item is being consistent with wherever that is, Mr. Robinson. Hopefully, that's, that's the goal, notwithstanding what you're, you're asking for, we certainly understand. Any, any other questions for Dennis? Seeing none, Ms. Ruby. Good to see you, you know the rules, name and address and three minutes and go get them.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Ann Ruby, 137 Park Avenue. I think this is a great amendment because there are quite a few vacant lots that are 50 feet or less, or 50 feet exactly, and they are where they are. I mean, they're all over the city, and I agree, it would be great to know where they all are, but one of my passions is container houses. If you had a 50-foot lot, you could put a 40-foot container. I think it would be awesome. So I really think this gives flexibility for our building product type and for helping people build homes that will be more affordable, that will maybe fit their lifestyle and their lots better. And the other thing is that it would be nice to have something like this be easy instead of the seven and a half feet. And I, I understand some people may be concerned that five feet is too close to the property line, but most of these lots are going to be in older neighborhoods where the buildings are already close to each other and the people understand when they're moving there, that they're moving into a more urban environment and less of a suburban environment. So I'm all for this, thank you.
I like that.
Great. And as Dennis said, the vast majority of these districts are already five feet to begin with, we're just dealing with a relative few when you take in the totality of all the districts we have.
I have a, a lot that's, kind of comes to mind. It's on Main Street as you're heading west after you cross over Beach or Blue. There's a lot there right behind that luxury apartments and condos that they're building, that it's a deep lot and it's 50 feet wide. And it would be, and it's in a great neighborhood. And just to give you an example, they're peppered all over the place, and you know, especially when the county, when my house, when my house was built in 1958, setback requirements were 50 feet. I have a fairly large lot, deep, but on one side I have five-foot offset and the other half, seven and a half feet. And so there, and my house now is a little over 2,900 square feet. It, it's possible and they're all there. And so, you know, you can, it's not designed for one area that you referred to, it is all over the city, trust me.
I understand that, and I'm not saying it is, but in order for you to get a bigger picture, right, I'm a, I'm a numbers guy at times, and I look at the numbers to see where the distribution is, to make sure that it is, that we know that there's 10 in this area, five in this area, six in this area, and where the impact is going to be. You know, it's, I, I'm not objecting to the setback, but I would just like to know where all these 50-foot or 50-feet lots are, so we have an idea of the picture that we're going to be painting and the impact and effect it's going to have on the future. You know, are we all going to, just going to build in the older section, which we probably needed, right? But what about the other sections of town? You know, can we go there and do some affordable housing too, and spread it all over? And people just say, oh, not in my neighborhood? Because that's the thing is, people are always saying, oh, not in my, we, we need this, but it's not in my neighborhood. Do I want a container home next to my house? I don't know. Do I want to be five feet from my neighbor? I don't know.
Point taken. Hopefully, we'll-
Thank you.
We'll move forward on that. I did want to make a comment, Mr. Vice Chairman, that my home was built only a measly 60 years after yours. There's the new and the old there. Okay, any other questions for Dennis?
I just have one comment, and that is for, for Mr. Robinson, that there was a huge land boom here in the 1920s, and that's when a lot, a whole lot of this city was platted, and it was platted, a whole lot of it was platted for 50-foot lots, and they are all over the place in the city. There are even places out west where they're building out off of Strickland Range Road that were originally platted in the 1920s and just never built on because that land bubble kind of crashed, as we know from history. But, but the way that they were originally platted, you look at plat maps and you'll see over and over again all over the city, plats that were done in, from 1923 to about 1925, a great deal of the city was platted then. So you see those 50-foot lots everywhere, not just in older built neighborhoods, but even in unbuilt areas.
Okay, okay, I think that point's been made. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, it's like a motion for Item 4F, please.
Can I make a motion that we approve Land Development Code Text Amendment, DEV 2024-531, Affordable Housing Setbacks?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, thank you very much, pass unanimously. Moving on to Item 5, Downtown Redevelopment Area Board Report.
I missed the meeting this month.
Okay, you are forgiven, sir, officially. All right, Midtown Redevelopment, please.
Long meeting.
It's not going to be a long report though, is it, sir?
No, one of the, the things that I brought up is the native plants, eliminating a lot of the turf, there was a lot of discussion about that on different things, and I think it's something that, that they're mostly, you know, the CRA areas where we're talking about. The appearance of, in the CRAs, mostly downtown along Main Street in the areas, they come up with a unique idea, staff did, they had a, a graph, and they had stars or circles, colored circles on it, and they had different things in this graph, like what you wanted to see in the improvement of the city.
Hmm.
And I thought it was so unique that, and they had 20 items, but you only had five, five colored circles, and so to pick out the top five. And it was so unique and, you know, and things that all of us talk about, and, but where they can define, the city brought it up, you know, the commission, brought it up the last commission meeting about, you know, the things that you'd like to see. Each commissioner had ideas, the mayor had a lot of great ideas, and they kind of incorporated it in that, and I thought it was unique and I think a lot of people should be thinking about that.
Well, you know, that's always the challenge, there's always a lot of good ideas out there, it's how to assess them and prioritize.
Well, that's the biggest thing, the city, you know, over the years, they've kind of, you know, I know on code enforcement, one of the things on code enforcement, we were, when I came here and I was on the code enforcement board, they had five inspectors. Now I think we have about 12. The city has, did a change, while I was on the planning board, we took over down over 3,000 buildings, can you imagine that? And there's probably another 3,000 that probably needs to be coming down, it's come down. But I'm just saying, the city is growing, and I think that it's something that all of us all look at on whatever boards you're on, and wherever the area is, that not so much blight, but the improvements of the city, cleaning up the parking areas.
Right.
And I, I think it was a good meeting, an educational meeting for myself.
Very good, thank you, Vernon. Beachside, please. Anyone, anyone? Okay, move forward to Affordable Housing. Last meeting was on the 21st of August, I was not there, indisposed, that's why I wasn't here on the 22nd too, had a, had a rough week. The next meeting is not till the 23rd of October, and I'll be, I'll give you a lot more detail of what's going on then, when I able to catch up. So with that, any further public comments? Seeing none, staff, Dennis?
Yeah, just one thing, in your packet, we included, last month, I think it was last month, July 25th, Planning Board Meeting, there was a discussion about neighborhood meetings and where neighborhood meetings are occurring and, and are they occurring close enough to some of the locations? Applicants stood up and said, you know, wasn't maybe aware of all of the locations where you can possibly have the meetings. So we said that we would put together a map of where meetings had occurred and put it in a package and, that we give to the applicants, and that's what we've done. If you take a look at kind of the package that I've, I've given to you, there should be in here, there's a map that shows all the locations where meetings have occurred in the city, and then there's also textual of where those meetings are. So if somebody is going to be doing something in the city, they can take a look at this map and, and see opportunities for meeting locations that might be closest to the site that they're, that this item is taking place. So I just wanted to let you know, we put that together, that's going into all of the packages for anybody who's required to have a city, a neighborhood meeting, so they'll have this to help them.
I think that's a great idea, particularly for folks, applicants that are just not familiar with the area, that just don't, don't know what's closest to and what would be most appropriate for, because what we want to do is hopefully get interested citizens and corporate individuals to these neighborhood meetings so they can, they can have their voice be heard. So this gives us hopefully an opportunity to do that. Thank you, Dennis.
Yeah, and it can be updated as we find other locations as well, so.
Great job.
Very good. Any board member comments? Anyone, anyone? Seeing none, this meeting's adjourned, thank you. Everybody having a good evening.